This evening to the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. Today's Tuesday, the 24th of September, and we welcome those who are here tonight and also watching us on our Channel 28 on the cable dial. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Councilmember Lammon?
Here.
Great, and I'm going to ask our honorary mayor, Zuri Ruiz, to come up to the podium and lead all of us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so if I can get everyone to stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for that, and thank you, Zuri. We'll hear from Zuri in just a little bit. And speaking of that, we had a little typo in our agenda, and so I am looking for a motion to add to our agenda just before Item 6A, which is the presentation from our Sonoma County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor, and Registrar of Voters, longest title in the county, thank you very much, Diva, if we will do the honorary mayor right before that presentation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, we'll have one abstention with Vice Mayor Skilman, who will be coming shortly. Okay, thank you for that. And we're at Item 4, which is Approval of Minutes and Notice of Waving of Reading of All Resolutions and Ordinances Introduced and/or Adopted Under This Agenda, and we're looking to approve the regular meeting minutes from the 10th of September.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yes, you can, before we make any further motions. Please, step up, Ms. Alderman. Thank you for calling out, because I wasn't looking at it all.
Just a correction, Mike Saramello was speaking a written statement from Orianna Riddle when he spoke last week.
Those were not his words, in other words.
What?
That was confusing. He was reading something from someone else.
A statement from Orianna Riddle.
Great, thank you very much for that. Okay, and we have the motion is second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining, please, 401 on that. And now we're at Item 5, which are our announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not, boy, I'm having a tough time reading, choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statement that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. The program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For information, call 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixl.com, or by texting your zip code, which is 94931, to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. And finally, the Kattati Police Department is hosting National Coffee with a Cop Day at Oliver's Market. The date is Wednesday, October 2nd. Join Kattati Police Officers from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. for a cup of coffee and a casual conversation. And now we will roll into our honorary mayor program, so I'm going to ask Zuri to come back up and give us a little bit of an update from the last time we met. Nice to have you here again.
Hello. Okay, so I reached out to some of my friends and families and asked about what they want in Kattati. So some of my friends were asking about parks needing like new cut, like the colors are fading away, or like new, new equipment and putting into the parks. And my friends like to skate, so they want like a skate park, or like a closed skate park that they can like skate to, skate, yeah.
So skate there, skate while they're there, and skate home?
Yes.
Got it.
And other people want like that, like clothes, clothing stores.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's a little out of our control, but well, you never know.
And just a place to hang out with their friends.
Awesome, okay, well, you did your homework assignment, that's very, very good. And we're going to do what we did last time, we're going to see if there's any questions from the council members up here. So I'll start at my right with Councilmember Moore, if you have any questions or comments for Zuri.
Zuri, I don't have any questions, but thank you for participating in that. You'll be happy to know that we are in the middle of updating our parks master plan to look at sprucing up a lot of the parks and maybe potentially adding different items to the parks. And part of that conversation, I think, did involve some issues around skate parks, so we'll see how that comes to fruition down the road. And as, as the mayor indicated, we don't really have a lot of say in what commercial enterprises come in, but we can certainly keep that on the radar. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, as was said, we are in the midst of updating our park master plan, and in particular, we've applied for a grant for a very large park over here. So I think that it would be wonderful if you and your friends could keep your eyes and ears open as that evolves, so that you can have some more input into that. And thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, welcome, Zuri, very nice to meet you, I didn't get to see you last time. I have to admit, I'm a little suspicious, are you sure City Manager didn't work with you talking about the park? That was perfectly timed, but I'm actually glad to hear, that means we're on the right track, that's, you see the need for that, and our staff saw the need, so that's something coming together the way we like to see it. Also, very pleased to hear the request for more quality retail. I'll look right over, Community Development, no, that was a discussion we were having, this is what people want, so that's, that's good to hear. So thank you for being here very much, and thank you for sharing those suggestions.
Thank you.
Zuri, you did a great job, I can see you someday soon sitting up here, that would be great. Hey, do you have anybody who would like to introduce this evening that came with you?
Yes, my mother and my principal.
Wave, there you guys are. Great, thank you for that. So we have a certificate we'd like to give you, and if either mother or principal has an iPhone and wants to take a photo, if not, we will call upon our city manager to come up and take the photo, because that's, that's called Other Duties as Assigned, it's in your job description somewhere, I'm sure, but we will meet you right up front here, for the whole council. of this. So we are now at Item 6, which is a presentation from the Sonoma County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor, Registrar of Voters. Do you have any other titles, Diva, I'm just curious, I think that's it though, right?
I am not the tax collector.
You are not the tax collector, very good. So Diva Marie Proto, welcome to Kattati, and we're looking forward to hearing about this new voting system.
Thank you very much for having me. So I will try to be relatively quick, and I would like to entertain questions from the council members afterwards. A little bit... No. I probably broke it. It was there for a sec. There. So I'm Diva Marie Proto from the County of Sonoma, and I took office in January, so this is my first chance presenting to you, so I thank you very much for the opportunity. A little bit about the department, so we are the County Clerk, Recorder, Assessor, and Register of Voters, so we have four very distinct functions, and we're very committed to public service. We actually became one department in 2001. The County Clerk was also the Registrar, also included at that point in time the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. It was the Public Administrator, Public Guardian, Public Conservator at one point, and they decided to combine it with the Recorder's Office, and then the Assessor afterwards decided to retire, so they decided to put all of the functions together. That's kind of how we came to be. So our previous election system, you guys are probably very familiar with the ballot cards that you used to get in the mail, so it was a mark vote system. We installed it in 1983 in the system. Paper-based, optical scan, it was a very reliable system, very accurate system, but it was antiquated. It, the equipment was no longer being manufactured or maintained, so when other counties stopped using it, we would purchase their old equipment, we had a stockpile, we would cannibalize it for parts to keep other ones going, and we were always kind of crossing our fingers during an election, making sure that it continued to work. We had one retired, semi-retired technician, he was interested in retiring, but he was the only person who could actually maintain the equipment, so he wasn't able to. A lot of the software wasn't supported, and state law prohibited changes to the system, so it's not like we could do something inside the county to update it. And we've heard lots from everybody, so there was no way to do periodic updates. So we would have election night results, release our vote by mail results at 8 o'clock, when we got all the polling places in and processed, couldn't be midnight, could be 2 o'clock, we would release our final election night results, and then would spend the next 30 days during the canvas period finalizing everything, and we'd release the final results after we certified. And that was very difficult on a lot of people, especially during close races. So, and then we also had what we called an E-Slate, which is a disabled access unit. Everybody kind of hated them, they were bears to set up, and very intimidating, very green screeny, and not very intuitive to use. Those were installed in 2006, federal law requires that we have a disabled access unit in all polling places to allow everybody to vote, so. I have a picture there of our old ballot cards, which people are used to seeing, and then that's a picture of our old tallying devices, so. 2017 and 2018, we entered a really good time to look at a new system. So the county had been putting money aside since 2014 in order to buy a system. They were talking about doing, funding at the state level. We had a couple new certified election systems. So a number of years ago, we had a Secretary of State that went through and decertified all election systems in the state of California, and then grandfathered everybody in. But nobody could move to another system, you were stuck with what you had, you could not do anything else. Everybody was just in a holding pattern. So we started getting new systems certified, and so we started to put together a plan, we did a voting systems replacement project, hired a special projects director for it, did an online survey to the public to find out what was important to them, we did a demonstration day with the media and the public, and we issued an RFP at the county level. So we were able to get a new system, we signed the contract in fall of 2018. After the November 18 election wrapped up, we started installing it immediately, because Palm Drive Healthcare District called a March special election, so we had to get it installed very quickly and get all our, our training done. So it really increases the automation, it increases the efficiency, it's going to decrease the extra help and overtime costs that we have at the county, decreased waste, so we used to have to order extra ballots for any possibility of anybody coming into the office. We now have a mobile ballot printer, so if somebody comes into the office, we're able to print their ballot right when they need it. We do have a new ballot design, so this is a sample ballot of the one that was used for the Palm Drive Healthcare District, so a larger sheet will be double-sided, it will be colored, so each election has a different color that's set by the Secretary of State. And we have a new accessible ballot marking device, and that does include a paper ballot, so it is not, nothing is stored on the machine itself. And if I can get through things fast enough, then I'll demonstrate it for you. So we have a number of other election changes that have happened over the last couple years, so the DMV has started their motor voter registration program, they've had hiccups, and it's caused more work for us in some places, but hopefully they're getting things ironed out. We have conditional voter registration now, so it used to be that you had to be registered to vote at the 15-day close of registration before the election, otherwise you were out of luck, you can't cast a ballot, or it can't be counted. Now we have conditional voter registration, so people can come in during that time period, register to vote conditionally, and cast a ballot that will be counted if we are able to successfully register them, based on all the criteria. We also now are paying for postage, so all the envelopes for vote by mails will go out postage paid, so we don't need to have people worrying about stamps anymore. We're rolling out a new Accessible Voter Information Guide online, so that people can go, they can use screen readers if they wanted to. Starting in November, we're going to have a new election night reporting, so there will be a GIS map component, so when you're looking at election results and you're like, why is it not completed yet, you'll be able to look at the map and say, oh, it's because that Sea Ranch area hasn't come back yet, we're still waiting for the polling places there. And we also have Remote Accessible Vote by Mail, which is the ability for people with disabilities to cast votes remotely. Some of the upcoming challenges we're going to have in the next couple years is the Voters' Choice Act, that is a county option at this point in time. We had five counties that piloted the program in 2018, a number of other counties have signed on for 2020, so we'll see how that goes. And that's really a move away from the old polling place methodology, and instead we would have larger regional vote centers open prior to the election. Everybody would be mailed a vote by mail ballot, and then for the 10 days before the election, we'd have six vote centers open in the county, and the four days before the election would have 30 of them, so people could go in and cast their votes. It would also be nice, because you don't have to be in that polling place to get your ballot, so you would be able to get your ballot regardless of where the vote center was. If you lived in Petaluma, but were working up in Cloverdale and wanted to cast a ballot, you would be able to get the Petaluma ballot there. But it will be quite an implementation in order to change everything over. We also have just a lot of legislation that is changing elections kind of constantly this year, I want to say 134 bills?
Three bills.
Three, okay. The, that we were tracking actively across the legislative session. And then, of course, in 2021, after the census is wrapped up, then we get to go and do all the redistricting for the county. We also always get a lot of questions about election security, so again, we have a paper-based system, so everything leads back to a paper ballot. We do central count in this county, so all the ballots come back to our office, they're counted in a locked, secured room. We do have public viewing available, so it is available to the public, but the access to the ballots is limited. The system is not connected to the internet, we are doing extensive cybersecurity training and discovery to make sure that we are all safe. And then one of the things just to mention is that there are a lot of redundancies around elections to make them safe and to make them reliable, so, you know, sometimes we get flack for how long it takes, and it's because we're following certain processes to make sure that we're counting all the ballots, and that we're triple-checking everything. So, lots of reconciliation. And we always get asked, why does it take so long after the election to get the results? So voting habits have changed in the last several years, so we now have what we call E-plus-three, so if ballots are postmarked on or before Election Day, and we receive them in the mail, up to three days after the election, we count them. That does mean that on Election Day, we don't know how many ballots we have left to count, because we haven't necessarily received them all. We also have signature curing now, so if you fail to sign your vote by mail envelope, or there is a mismatch with your signature, we're now going to be sending a letter allowing you a time period to cure that signature. We also go through, everybody who votes at the polls gets credit, so we have to go through and give everybody credit for voting. Again, I mentioned conditional voter registration, so in June of 2018, I think we had about 145 people who chose to conditionally register in the two-week period and cast a vote. In November of 2018, it was over 800 people, and the majority of them were doing it on Election Day. So we always kind of pride ourselves on no lines, and I can tell you that in our office there were lines on Election Day, because there were so many people in there trying to cast their ballots. So one of the ways you can help is if you vote by mail, which I hope you guys do, please get those ballots in early, and encourage the people that you are friends with to get those ballots in early as well, because the more we can do ahead of time, the less we're doing on the tail end during that certification canvas period. So, do you have any questions for me?
Great, thank you for that, Diva. Yeah, we'll see if there's any questions from council, and then I may even open this up to the public to see if there's questions that you guys can reply to, or get back to Lammon. So I'll start with Councilmember Moore, do you have any questions?
I just have one, I had a couple, but you answered those, so thank you very much, Diva. But the one thing I was curious about, when you said you're not connected to the internet, but yet you could go to Cloverdale and pick up a Petaluma ballot, just pre-programmed into a particular hardware?
So there's a couple different things, so we have different systems. So the tallying system, which is what I was referring to as the election system, that is not connected to the internet, that is only available in our office. Our voter registration system has limited connectivity, we have a whole lot of firewalls around it, so that's where the voter registration information is, and that's where we would get, where people are registered from. If we went to vote centers, there's a large list of security protocols, virtual private networks and secured connections, that we would need to set up in order to make that work. We don't have it now, because we don't have the assistance.
Thank you. Great, thank you for that. Councilmember Harvey?
What percentage in the previous elections were votes tossed out because of the, you called it signature curing?
The signature curing. It's a relatively low percentage, but...
Was after the fact you let people know sometimes?
Well, we would let them know ahead of time, we have a portal on our website where you can go in and check your vote by mail status, so you can know if it's been received, if it's been counted, or if it was rejected for some reason. But it used to be that there was no signature curing period allowed, so if we got that, if somebody dropped their vote by mail off, for instance, on Election Day at a polling place, and we got it after the election, there was no way to legally to allow it to be cured. That changed a couple years ago for, I think, no signatures, and then the mismatched signatures came after that. So it's relatively a new thing, but we had a pretty slow percentage, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I did have one question I wanted to ask you about, Diva, what, tell me a little more about voters' choice specifically. What I wanted to ask was, you mentioned towards the end of that period, there's an increased number of spots, I believe it was 30 or 40 throughout the county? 30, okay. How does that compare to the current number of polling places roughly?
For a large election, we could have 180 to 200 polling places.
Okay, so it's a balance, though, between the extended period of time, which you can come in and vote. All right, I just wanted to get a sense of that. I, I will say, I found the history of how your office came to be and everything you're required to do fascinating. Talk about an incredibly wide span of responsibilities, I'm impressed with the range of expertise that's probably required to do all those things, so it makes it even more impressive to see that you guys were able to roll out this new system so quickly to be ready for the vote with Palm Drive, so congratulations on that.
We have phenomenal staff in all areas of the department, so we are very, very lucky.
That's good to hear, thank you.
Great, again, thank you for the presentation, Diva. You said that this will be rolled out in the general election for 2020, so November 2020? I mean, as far as the first time it's going to be in a general election?
The first time it's going to be countywide, where people will see the new ballots and everything, will be the March 2020 election. There is a November of 2019 election, it's relatively small, so.
So it's probably not going to, will that, will the system be used for that?
The system will be used for it.
It will?
Yeah.
All right, great. Yeah, and again, thank you guys for all your efforts, because, I mean, it's a, it's a tremendous job. I know I'm one of those that's yelling at the radio or the TVs, like, where are the results for Kattati, come on! So I totally understand that it's a, it's a slow process, I mean, there's a lot to do, I totally get that. Thank you again for the presentation, I'm just going to open this up real quick, see if there's any questions from the public. You don't have to answer them tonight, if you want to send us a reply, we can do it at the next meeting, but if you feel so obliged to answer, you can come back up.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and with it, yeah, no, I'll have you sit down. Sit back down, thanks. Ms. Alderman?
I wanted to say, I'm the, I was the precinct inspector for the Kattati Bets Building, and I am so glad the DAU is gone. And we had 800 people at the Kattati Bets for our one precinct at the last, it was crazy, and I wanted to show you, we are all very well-trained, and they have triple checks, double checks, we sign everything, so don't worry about security, they got it covered.
No, and, and I'm aware of that, I'm one of those that still goes in, I don't vote by mail, I will, change probably, but, I mean, it's, it's kind of fun to go in and get the feel, and, yeah, you guys do a tremendous job as far as volunteers go too, so thank you for that. Is there any other public comment on this topic? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that, and again, thank you ladies very much for being here this evening. Okay, we are now at Item 7, which is Approval of Final Agenda, and I assume we have no additional changes.
Thank you, Mayor, no further changes.
Excellent. All right, now we're at Item 8, which is Citizen's Business and Public Comment for Consent Calendar Items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so. of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will put this piece of paper down and open up citizens' business if there's any questions or comments.
Should we read the speaker card?
Oh, I do. Mr. Berich, thank you very much. Sorry.
Mayor, would you be so kind to read the speaker card again?
It just says, uh, citizens' business.
What's the title of the person you want to speak?
You.
Want to read it for us as it's written, since you require speaker cards?
Well, yeah, sure, I can, I can do that. I, I'm confused, it's not your first name. Your first name is George.
Just read the card, sir.
Well, it's, it's written here as councilman, I assume you mean former, because you're no longer a councilman, Berich.
Yes. Councilman Berich, the same way we refer to Bill Clinton as President Bill Clinton, not former Bill Clinton, or the impeached Bill Clinton, the same way we respond, we refer to Gray Davis as Governor Gray Davis, not the recalled Governor Gray Davis.
I think you...
So thank you very much.
I think you need to move on.
The title is Councilman George Berich. Now, the clock may start.
No, it's...
If you're going to ask for a speaker card, please try to read it and not play politics.
You're wasting your time.
Please, and you're interrupting again.
You're wasting your time.
Sir, you're interrupting. I'd like to welcome the public again tonight to Qatadi's Communist Comedy Night, again here, where they vote 99% of the time together in unison. The only organization or nation that outvotes 99% is China, Russia, Venezuela, and Cuba, which is 100% of the time. Because if you don't vote correctly, you don't, you don't get home at night. Now, Mayor, at the last meeting, I got up here and spoke, and you interrupted me not one time, but two times when I was speaking, and I had to correct you to please not interrupt. You also criticized me for inviting people to come and park and tour Qatadi and spend money in Qatadi, as my invitation being disingenuous. How dare you? I can invite anyone to come to Qatadi, I wish. And then you said, well, you know, that, that property out there, the Qatadi Park-and-Ride, is going to be developed. I don't know how in the heck you know what properties are going to be developed and which ones are not going to be developed, quite frankly. Like Orin Thiessen, is he going to develop? Oliver's Market going to develop? In what century are they going to develop? In the meantime, can people please invite people to park in Qatadi and come use our town and enjoy our town, spend money? This is just so ridiculous. Your antics are ridiculous. Your record is to deny everything and admit nothing. You try to be funny, you're not funny. You're corny. There's a difference between funny and corny. People humor you in this town because of the seat you're sitting in. I've asked you many times to refer me by my official title that I worked very hard at, which is Councilman Berich. And the reason I do interrupt you, sir, from time to time, is because you set the example for interrupting. You've taught us how to do it.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak this evening? Ms. Alderman?
Um, I wanted to speak on the memory care facility in the Planning Commission meeting. It, the whole idea of a memory care facility where Red's recovery room is, is a bad idea. It's got twi, you guys seem to have not noticed that it's got twice the accident rate. It's got twice the injury rate at that intersection. It's 200 feet from the dangerous 270-degree turn that people go in legally in. It's two stories, it's two stories locked facility in one elevator. Didn't we learn anything about Villa Capri and all that and fires? We don't have a ladder truck to get those elder, those disabled people out. You, Mark Lammon made it so hard, we had, I got it on social media last month, and, well, it got, because I stayed silent, you got no in public, hardly any public input. You were supposed to move it, you moved it to later date. You got two people, same as before, because, and you approved, the Planning Commission approved it, and it's still in process now, even though there's all this stuff. No, but my, I wrote that my, my worker, in-home support worker could not find anything about it on the city website about the planning, about the memory care facility. I've told you over and over and again that you got it, this is something, it affects the whole 116 corridor. It affects everybody from Hessel, Sebastopol, and you have to put in those, for safety, you got to spend that $10 million before you start developing that area. It's, you're going to kill us. Basically, you're going to, we've been asking for 25 years. It was a number-three priority in the 1998 general plan for the West Qatadi Avenue turn to be corrected. It's 2019 almost ended, and we still have, you don't have a cent saved for it. You put our lives at, at risk every day. Nobody in our neighborhood would, will die like they did at Madrone to get the Caltrans to pay for it. It's the city's responsibility. Caltrans is drawing the line. You guys, that's, if you ask the people on the west side of, of Qatadi, what's the most important to them? The West Qatadi turn. And you guys are going to make it worse with this memory care facility, and it's going to be the first, who's going to be the first person they're going to go to and sue when somebody gets hurt out there? The city of Qatadi.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on citizens' business? Yes, Irene?
Good evening, City Council and other attendees. My name is Irene Hildener, and I, and I have lived in Qatadi for on to 32 years. I'm going off the agenda tonight because I need to address something that is always in the news, but I don't hear the city of Qatadi too involved. Not everyone wants to hear domestic violence. And this goes on behind closed doors. Next month is Domestic Violence Month, and I have been a victim for many years with violence by my mother and my first husband, not only physical, but also mental. Domestic violence happens every single of the, single day of the year. We don't just have to have one month of it. I heard something at a meeting this morning that I feel Qatadi should put into play. Does the police department know what to do when they receive a call on violence other than what they do by the book? When dispatchers receive calls, are questions being asked, is your abuser nearby? Well, no one is going to say yes, because it's just not going to happen, especially when the abuser is two inches away from your ear. Could it be possible to start using code words by the dispatcher? What if the victim dials 911 and orders a pizza? And the victim can say, yes, I want to order a large pizza? Would the dispatcher catch on that the victim is in trouble? She, the dispatcher can say, are you in trouble? And the victim would say, yes, I would like to order a pizza with sausage. Do you want it delivered? This is what's really, domestic violence is my passion. I will, if it were the Wild West, I'd have about 2,030 notches on my belt, just taking care of them. And when the dispatcher says, do you want it delivered? Then the victim can give the address without the abuser nearby knowing that the, that the police are on the way. In all of my experiences, I could not dial 11 and order a pizza, nor could I let the police know I was being violated, as I was always being warned about talking. And abusers will do that. They're going to threaten you, they're going to say they're going to kill the family, they're going to kill the dog. I think we could make a huge difference in the community if something like this was started. I see the police logs every day, and I can tell the violence that goes on in this community. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on citizens' business?
Can I do a quick sound?
Sure, you can come back up and do that. Could you tell us which item?
Um, the professional A.
Okay.
The, um, with co-compliance, one of the problems with the fire and explosions five years ago was that you did not have your own code enforcement, and you had, you borrowed the guy from Sebastopol Glen. And then we had a code enforcement officer for a few years, and now we're going back to that. This is why there, for 17 months, you, there was not a single building code or anything put, was enforced, because you had a guy on contract. It doesn't make sense to not have your, a city to not have their own code enforcement officer, but to contract it out. What happens when there's an earthquake and he's needed 12 other places? There, you know, and you're, you're just setting yourself up again. You, you need to make sure that we, and if you're going to have developments, you're going to have a code pla, guy come just for the building those houses and everything? It just doesn't make sense that you don't have your own code enforcement.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close citizens' business. And we will now move to item nine, which is the consent calendar, and we have items A, B, C, and D. Is there any item that needs to be polled by any council member? No?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? So 4-0-1 vote without Vice Mayor Skilman. Thank you very much. And we will move to item 10, direction on future agenda items. Does anyone have any items for any future agenda?
Not the same thing.
Nope. Nope. No. All right. All right, we'll move into our regular agenda now, item 11. And our first item is discussion, discussion of disposable food service waste, no, I'm not going to get that right, but I'm going to try it again. Too many W's in there. Discussion of disposable food service ware waste model ordinance. Sorry for the corny line. And I'll turn that over to our city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It's kind of like my daughter's fox in socks, Dr. Seuss book, right?
Yeah.
Um, so you read the title, that's what this item's about. And this is not an ordinance introduction, but a presentation on the model ordinance that the waste agency, now Zero Waste Sonoma, drafted and adopted back in 2018. Also, I'll do the intro on this. Leslie Lukash is here. She's the executive director for the waste agency or Zero Waste Sonoma, and she'll do the middle part of the presentation, and then will come back to me. But just to touch on some high points before we get into this presentation, the attached model ordinance would prohibit styro, polystyrene foam food service ware distributed by food establishments and food providers. It would prohibit single-use polystyrene foam products sold by food retailers or retail vendors, so like, you know, polystyrene cups and that sort of thing, like coffee cups. Old school, I haven't seen those much anymore, but that sort of thing, or single-use polystyrene ice coolers, that, you know, that type of thing. Requires food establishments and food providers to provide recyclable or compostable takeout containers and only provide straws and utensils upon request, the appropriate straws and utensils, not the old-style non-disposable type. And then it also encourages voluntary takeout fees to defray the cost of disposable service ware and corresponding credits to customers who bring their own. As I mentioned at the outset, the Waste Agency Board of Directors approved the model ordinance at their September 19th, 2018 board meeting, and the intent after that was that the various jurisdictions throughout the county would then take the model ordinance and adopt it locally. And as of, there was a bit of a delay earlier this year, but as of now, the city of Sebastopol has adopted this, and this fall/winter is when we're expecting, when I'm expecting to see a lot of different cities take up this issue and start discussing it. I'll also note that in 1989, just a bit of historical context, the city did previously adopt the polystyrene food packaging ordinance, which is codified in 8.2, zero of our municipal code. It's also attached to the staff report. This is more narrowly crafted to prohibit polystyrene on city property, city facilities. And then one of the, one of the educational challenges with recycling and composting is that it's dependent on the infrastructure that's available locally to process these waste streams. So that's one of the, that's, I guess, I think perpetually I've seen in our own efforts here, it's been an educational challenge, because I think, especially when you have restaurants, they'll buy, you know, like taterware, like the kind of disposable utensils that say they're compostable, they're printed on them as compostable. And in theory, they are compostable, but they're not necessarily compostable in Sonoma County, because you need the infrastructure, the composting facilities for that specific type of product to be able to compost it. And this is the case, it's, this is the case not only in Sonoma County, but in virtually across the state, and I'm sure across the nation, where it's really just a patchwork of different types of infrastructure available to process these waste streams, and so that then affects what would actually, in fact, be recyclable and compostable in those areas. So the intent of the attached model ordinance is that the regulations will be implemented throughout the county, and then there would be a one-year period where education of businesses can occur about the appropriate single-use container products. So even though the, the model ordinance does have a penalty provision if people don't follow it, the intent was that one year would be a phase-in time, both where no one would be penalized, but also would allow existing establishments to use the rest of their product and then start buying compostable or recyclable or reusable products. And then there would be a hardship exemption also available. And then, like I said earlier, the, I think the main considerations in a model ordinance like this are both education of our local businesses in Qatadi, but also the enforcement and how that's performed, and that's something that would need a little bit more exploration, I think, in both of those. So that's just a high-level overview, and I'll hand it off to Leslie to present.
All right, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me today, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers, as well as the city manager. I will be going over the disposable foodware ordinance that we have, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as we move this forward. The great news is the city manager covered a lot of it, so I can skim through some of it for you. But as you know, I'm with the agency, which is a joint powers authority. We have representation from all the nine cities and the county, and our mission is to divert face, waste from the landfill through reuse, recycling, reducing, and composting. We have many initiatives and projects that we work on as an agency, but one of the things we do is provide model ordinances that we share with our cities. And we, you know, do a lot of research of ordinances and seeing what's happening in the state, as well as, you know, how to be in compliance with state regulations. So that's our role to create a model ordinance and then work with your city to fine-tune it as well. So you probably are all aware of the impacts of polystyrene. You know, it does not biodegrade, polystyrene photodegrades. So what that means is when it escapes in the environment, it just breaks up into smaller and smaller pieces. Actually, all plastics photodegrade. It's also made of fossil fuels, which is synthetic. It, you know, it does leach into our food chain. Polystyrene, you know, has just high environmental impacts, and it's just really not economically feasible to recycle. Although you can recycle it, you have to collect a huge amount to create a small brick, and it's just not very economically feasible. and it's just not very economically feasible. The main thing for me is protecting our water sheds. So when plastics escapes into the environment, as I mentioned, it breaks out into smaller pieces and eventually makes our waste into the creeks and then eventually the ocean. And I'm sure most of us have seen news about the Pacific Garbage Patch and just the challenges that we're having. So this ordinance supports the zero-waste goal that was recently passed by Catati. It also supports some of the state's initiatives that are happening. There are a lot of alternative products that are on the market that are truly recyclable and truly compostable. So we'd like to see the switch to those products. And we really need it just to further the environmental health of our, you know, nature, waterways, wildlife. We did conduct a research prior to creating the ordinance. This is all done through the internet and we had three thousand respondents and we got a tremendous amount of support for creating an ordinance like this. We're also, there's over a hundred cities, I think the last time I looked, there's a hundred and twenty cities who have passed similar ordinances focusing on polystyrene. And as mentioned, Sebastopol was the first one. And regarding the calendar, Petaluma is going to be hearing it for the final time in October, just in a couple weeks. It's already slated for Windsor, Cloverdale, and Healdsburg in October. The county, the city of Santa Rosa, and the city of Sonoma are going to be hearing it in July, in January. And they're going to be hearing it alongside the zero-waste ordinance. So everyone's, most of the cities are all scheduled and it's, it's all in the works of moving forward. I'm not going to go over what it covers since the city manager already did that. But really, it eliminates the use of polystyrene as well as non-recyclable and non-compostable food service ware. It does address the cities. I can see, you know, the city already has their polystyrene ordinance, but it's nice coming in here and seeing everybody with the reusable glasses and nothing single-use. It does affect city contractors as well, so if a city's going to do business with, let's say, an event, that event will also have to comply with this polystyrene ordinance. It will also affect retail vendors and special events. Things like ice coolers, like the iglues, will no longer be able to be sold, as well as packing peanuts. And so we'll work with these businesses to find alternatives. So what can you do? What we're going to be focusing on is reusable and recyclable and compostable products. The products that really are that need, the needs. And this ordinance still allows single-use plastics, so you can still use a single-use plastic number-one cup as long as it's recyclable in the current system. And so, as mentioned, you can do a charge and that's all to support, you know, any offset cost of changing products. So I mentioned what's approved. You can see on the left, left-hand side, products that are still going to be available to food ware establishments. And then on the right side are those that are not. In addition to the compostable products, I see so many businesses in Sonoma County trying to do the right thing by buying compostable products. They're spending more money without realizing that this material is just going to the landfill, whether it's getting screened out at the compost facility or just ending, ending up in the landfill bin by consumers. So I put some of those, those, you know, we'll do messaging and education outreach so that businesses know the right thing to buy. As well as the iglues, actually igloo came out with a new compostable, uh, container. So we will start promoting those. But the main thing is we're going to have a big outreach plan. We're starting now by informing business, informing councils of the disposable food ware ordinance. From there, we're going to work with your legal to, you know, create the ordinance and make sure it can get adopted within the city. We are going to be doing presentations with stakeholders in your city so we can solicit feedback and then finally we'll come back to you with that feedback and then see if you're in a place to vote for the ordinance. And this is just an example of some of the education outreach we'll be doing about how to, you know, properly recycle materials. So we have a three-phased approach now until December thirty-first, we are doing these types of presentations. We are currently developing outreach and education material. We are researching and defining what recyclable and compostable products work within our system, conducting stakeholder meetings, and then hopefully we can get these, these ordinances passed by December thirty-first. I think it's a little aggressive, we may try and push it back to Earth Day. And I just wanted to share some of the education material. We've been already researching and creating our education material that are showing, you know, showing consumers and businesses what's best, you know, what, what can be used and what can't be used. This is an example from the city of Alameda. But, you know, best is reuse, we know that. We want, you know, businesses and consumers to use products like that. But we're going to create this whole marketing campaign for all the cities and, and do the outreach with businesses. Phase two is the ordinance will go into effect and at that point, we will be going out and doing technical assistance to your businesses, helping them move from the products that they shouldn't be using to the ones that they are. We're going to create a, a complaint-driven system. So let's say a consumer sees the wrong product, they can go to our website, you know, put in a complaint and we'll do the follow-up. And then, you know, we'll support the businesses as needed. The third phase will be the next year and then we'll have an enforcement plan. I can assure you, our enforcement plan is not meant to be a heavy, coming down with a heavy hammer. We want to work with these businesses and help them along the way. I've worked with other communities where there's financial penalties and I can tell you, they're rarely given. We have a way that, you know, we issue, you know, three letters of warning, we go out and we meet with them and we can, you know, work with them. And if there is a problem, if, if they really either can't afford the change or there's no product that's on the market, we do issue exemptions for them. So we're, we're out here to try and make it work. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Leslie. We'll start with, see if there's any questions or comments from council members. We'll open it up to the audience. May need you to kind of come back and forth like we did with the folks from Sonoma County. So I'll go to this direction to start something different and start with Councilmember Landman.
All right. Well, good evening. Thank you for being here. Very good to hear from you. I have a few questions I wanted to ask you. First of all, you mentioned at this point, this is something that's been in motion for a while and I believe you said, over a hundred and twenty cities have already gone through and successfully adopted this practice. I wanted to ask, have there been legal challenges or is this something that has been largely resolved in that matter?
The poly, the American Chemistry Council really hasn't focused on this one yet. There was a little bit of movement from some companies, but no, it, it's too far along that there are no legal challenges anymore.
Now, being, coming in at number one hundred and twenty-one or something like that does give us a fair amount of comfort. So that, that's good to hear though, it's important to assess. That's the next thing I wanted to ask and it might be a question for you, it might be a question for our legal counsel. I do know the JPA, great thing to use to protect, has a lot of legal protections in case something was to come up. My question would be, there seems to be one question of how implementation enforcement might be handled. It could be something the city does to some degree, it could be something that the Waste Management Agency does to some degree. And I was curious if we could speak tonight on, if there's any legal protection that we lose perhaps in doing that? Any changes, depending which direction you go, or is essentially the same?
Well, I haven't evaluated it in any depth whatsoever. There, there are legal protections under the JPA law that protect the JPA and the membership of the JPA from legal liability for the JPA's activities. Does the JPA have authority to do enforcement under the JPA agreement?
So we do have actually an agreement in place between the JPA and the city that references identification as well as enforcement. So that's something that we'll need to work with the city manager and the city attorney to go through and it's just draft, so we are happy to work it, work through it together. So we can do the enforcement up to a point. Within this polystyrene ordinance, there is a fee-based system or, you know, a ticket system. And so we don't have that mechanism.
That would probably be the hopping off point where it comes back to local control, I would expect. Well, I just wanted to ask, I can see some of this is clearly to be determined at this point. It's not something we're voting on tonight, but that is something I'd like to hear about when you come back next time, hopefully. And I do hope we see you soon. Last, hopefully a easier question, single-use coffee cups. You know, for years, we've all thought they were recyclable and thrown them in the recyclable thing and it turns out, of course, they're unusable due to the plastic lining. What I wanted to ask, is there an effective, truly compostable in this county product to replace those available?
Unfortunately, not. The hardest replacement is the hot coffee cup because you need some type of lining in between the paper and the cup. So that's an exemption at this point because there's really no alternative on the market.
Okay.
There are some that have the PLA lining, the polyatic acid, which is made out of the, like a cornstarch or sugar starch. But unfortunately, that's not accepted in any of the surrounding composting facilities. And because the PLA has synthetic binding materials and when a compost facility is making compost, they're traditionally making organic compost for the organic farmer, so they're not allowed to accept PLAs.
That seems like that would be a good one to solve because that seems to be, I'm sure, a very large segment of our, of our garbage stream or our recycle stream. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe as it stands right now, the best alternative is a reusable container, like if you go to a coffee franchise. Yeah.
Exactly. We all do that or many of us do that pretty regularly. It's still pretty easy to forget sometimes, but I see trying to move very quickly to get everybody to adopt, that would be challenging. It would be, it would be a hard thing to do as much as I think it's a good direction to go.
Yeah, and that's why in our education campaign, we're going to do what's best first, which is reusable. So we're actually going to put reusables, you know, that's part of our messaging so that, you know, we can have a message across the county.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, council member. Councilmember Harvey.
I just wanted to hit again on the, the organics and the composting. Because that was a big discussion that we had. And most of the farmers that are within Sonoma County are organic farmers. And so there's been a push to want organic compost. So that's why this PLA, plastic, is, is a problem for us. We had a very long discussion and presentation on that. So that's the real big problem with all of that. Has to do with people wanting to stay organic farmers. And if they get compost that has these items in it, then they can no longer have their items be certified as organic. So it's kind of this chain reaction, if you will. So those are the things that we have to think about. I want to hit again a little bit from a question, well, not really a question, but, well, no, I do have a question on that. So the plastic bags, we went round and round. I know you weren't there, you missed all that fun, we had loads of fun with that. But the agency actually does the enforcement on that. So how much have we had to done? I have not heard that we've had much of any that has had to people go out and do too much to encourage people.
I haven't heard much either.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that's my recollection, so I thought that was fair. And I just want to remind the council that when we redid this JPA, this was sort of this whole model ordinance and the enforcement and the education and all that was very hard during the discussions of the JPA. That's some of why, because of that, these agreements, if we want the agency to do the enforcement, we have to have a separate agreement with them because some of the jurisdictions wanted to do their own enforcement. So I just want to remind people of that because some of the agencies wanted to do that. That's kind of why we're in this predicament. For the most part, the education is pretty, even everyone wanted the education done. So I, I think we're pretty fair there. But those two things for right now, I wanted to make sure that I highlighted for you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor DeLusso. Thank you, Leslie, for that presentation. Couple of questions I had. Sebastopol has now adopted this ordinance. When did they adopt it?
They adopted it September, I believe. No, when did they adopt it?
It was a while ago.
Gosh, at least six months ago.
Yeah.
It was before me, I can say that. But I've been at the agency for almost four months.
And it was based on this model?
Yes.
Okay. And how long of a timeframe do you know that that took for them to adopt that?
Oh, they adopted it very quick. Actually, it was August of last year is when they adopted it. And it's September of last year because it was presented to council in August of twenty eighteen alongside the zero-waste resolution. So they, Sebastopol passed them both at the same time.
And, and looking at the time periods that you projected for presenting these to various cities and potential implementation, you're looking at early twenty twenty?
Yes, but based on now some of the other cities, I'm, I'm going to, we're probably going to push it to Earth Day of April, April twenty-first.
So if the council were in agreement, why could not this be adopted within the next sixty, ninety days?
That would be great. I mean, that, that's the intent is for councils to pass it as much as possible or as quick as possible. But we want to make sure to reach out to the community first so that they have a say and then we hear their feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, in fact, that's my biggest concern, first thing I wrote down when I read through this in the agenda, is that there needs to be a discussion with the business owners. Something like this just, oh, by the way, we approved this two weeks ago, that's not going to go very well. I mean, that's the wrong thing to do. But I'm even thinking of, and I know that coffee containers or, or coffee cups are probably the biggest issue. But even things like gas stations, and I hope you're thinking of anybody that can sell, not just coffee houses, not just restaurants, not just grocery stores, there are other businesses that have food ware containers of some sort, whether it's, you know, for drinks or, or food that you would eat. So my biggest concern is having some time to talk with the businesses. And, I mean, I, I would love to see the city, and I've mentioned this to the city manager, I'd love to see some kind of a workshop that maybe you guys would do down here and, you know, do one in like the morning hours and one in the later afternoon hours so we can kind of try to catch as many businesses as we can, get the help of the chamber to get the word out and so on. So, so that, that's, but I thought I heard you say that too, from the educational side.
Yeah, you're actually spot on. That's exactly the model that we're, we're going to be doing.
No, that, that's, that's great. Does modifying this model ordinance, and I don't, I don't know what I mean by modifying yet, but let's just say Catati wants to do something different, hard to believe, but we want to do something that's not mentioned in the model ordinance. Does that weaken it from the JPA standpoint and from a liability standpoint? Or is there, I mean, is there some flexibility there that the different jurisdictions can modify them to some degree? I'm just not clear on that.
We, we hope that cities pass the model ordinance as is, but that doesn't preclude a city to modify it how they want. You know, it'd be easier for us if everybody has the same thing and if modifications were minor. But I will tell you, Petaluma did take out the requirement for recyclable and compostable products in place of polystyrene. I think that's a disservice to Petaluma only because we want to educate businesses on the right products to, to purchase and many of them can be cost competitive to polystyrene, but that was the way they chose to go, so.
Yeah, that kind of seems counterintuitive to what you're trying to do here, but.
Right, because you think businesses, they, again, they want to do the right thing, they just don't have, they haven't been educated properly.
Yeah.
And I will remind everyone again with this, that we had to go through with the plastic bags, the one thing that the businesses kept telling us over and over again is please, cities, be consistent. It is much more difficult for them, especially where some of the cities, for instance, we are right next to Roanoke Park. For Roanoke Park to have one set of rules and across the street have Catati have a different and the businesses don't know what to do. So I, I just want to remind people that, so.
No, that's, that's critical.
You can change it, but it is better if the whole area has a consistent ordinance. This is one of the downsides to doing it this way.
Right.
It was one of the cons.
I do remember that discussion loud and clear though, for sure.
To remind people.
The last question I have for you too is, I would assume by now, knowing what you know as far as what can be either recycled or composted in Sonoma County, that... you know as far as what can be either recycled or composted in Sonoma County, that you must, and I hope you have, or at least can get your hands on, a list of vendors who sell those items. Because more than anything, that's what's going to help a lot of the businesses in town. A lot of these people, like you say, are trying to do the right thing, but what they're buying, if it's not accepted in a Sonoma County facility, which in and of itself is asinine, I will say, and I don't understand how, you know, one county from another can have these different abilities to process all this stuff. But I'm not in the garbage business, so I don't get it, and I'll freely admit that. But I think that would be probably the biggest help for the businesses is if, you know, using up their product in that one year, grace period, and then they have a list of vendors that they can go to to buy the newer supplies. So are you guys developing something like that?
We are. They'll all be on our website and with our education material. We'll provide the specs because as a government, we can't tell them, you know, which company to go buy from, but we'll do the specs, and then we will list the businesses that sell products that meet that spec.
That's great. Okay. Well, I think we've peppered you with questions, but we may have you come back up. I'm going to open this up to the public and see if there's any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie. All right, go ahead and open this up. Ms. Alderman.
I'm fine with the styrofoam ban. I'm more concerned about the enforcement. You guys didn't shut down the living wage ordinance because you didn't have enough staff and didn't think it could be implemented. And you don't have the co, how are you going to, you don't have the infrastructure to enforce this, even if it becomes law. How are you going to figure it out? You know, how, who gets the fish and chips place? You know, do they get, you just don't have the infrastructure. And I think you guys really need to think about that before you do the ban, because it'd be silly to put on the books and you don't enforce it.
Well, Ms. Alderman, too, just one thing. I thought I heard Leslie say, and I'll have her come back up to respond to that, but I thought I heard her say that there'd be assistance from the county on doing some of the enforcement as well. So that helps. The JPA, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's, but I mean, if you're going to have the city ordinance, it's a little, it'd be confusing. Is it against city code? Is it, you know, you have to lay out all that.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else on this? Mr. Beric?
Well, is there any limit to what government wants to do? The heavy hand of government seems to know no limits, especially in Katati. And when Katati passed its own styrofoam ban some years ago for city property, I warned the city that you were not going to stop there. There's no way Katati is going to stop there. It's a prelude. It's a place to get people used to the idea. But the fact is, it has been 20 years since I recommended that Katati helped put out a large container outside so citizens could recycle their packing styrofoam. But it fell on deaf ears. Nobody wanted to deal with it. Nobody wanted to deal with styrofoam packing material in Katati. So many of us users of that product had to use fossil fuels and go to Santa Rosa and Ronert Park to recycle those, that product for many years. And it just goes to show that the city council really isn't concerned about the environment, or they would have done something about packing foam years ago. And you're not going to stop with this polyfoam styrofoam product. You're not going to stop there. All the packages that we're getting from Amazon have plastic bubbles inside there. We have to pop those and throw those away. They're going to come after those. They're going to come after toys. They're coming after life jackets for boating. You saw the list. The list is endless. What about the free market? How about the free market getting involved? And why don't we have this agency do some honest outreach to the community, showing how it's cost effective and it's wise to go with these other alternatives? Why must it be that the government has to play this heavy-handed role and coming down with fines and inspections and code enforcement and so forth, putting a bad taste in everyone's mouth in town? You know, it's going to extend on to diapers. I mean, you name it. Think of all the plastics that are used. You're not going to stop there because it's about control. That's nothing to do with the environment, nothing to do with our food sources. It's about your control and where it will end.
Thank you very much for those comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there anything you wanted to come back up to address that you heard?
No.
No?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, thank you for your presentation. So what we're doing this evening is providing information for staff. We have no, we're not taking an approval on this item.
Correct. Yeah, there's no approval, no introduction of the ordinance at this time. But if the council was interested in proceeding with an eventual introduction of this ordinance, the recommendation is that staff is directed to work with the waste agency on outreach to businesses for some of the comments tonight. And then also drill down on the compliance piece, just to wrap our arms around what that means in Katati, whether that's a city function, a waste agency function, or something else. So that would be, that would be the recommendation if the council decides to move in this direction.
Yeah, and I would really think that outreach is probably the most critical step, next step to take. So businesses have a concept of, you know, what are we even talking about? What does it mean to my business? I've got a stock room full of styrofoam coffee cups. What do you want me to do with those? Well, we're not going to ask anybody to throw them in the garbage, but, you know, we're going to work through the process, you know, use down your supply. And then here are the alternatives. So I would love to see, if the council is interested, I'd love to see some presentation done for businesses at a couple of different times. Like I said, maybe a morning one and a later afternoon one, to try to capture as many as we can, involve the chamber, they can put it out in their newsletter, you know, all of those kinds of outreach efforts and all the help that we could get from zero waste. So, I mean, I'd like to see that if you guys are interested as a next step, but I'm also wide open to hearing more about it. Yeah.
Well, I also agree with the comment on enforcement. We don't have the staff, but that's part of why during all of these model ordinance, we worked with the agency staff to ensure that they would have staffing to do that. And we can set up the agreements to do that. One benefit of us doing that is that there is dedicated staff to do that. And there's then also consistency. So they work for the agency. They understand the educational material. They can go out and work with people to do that versus everybody in every city having to get their own expert on that. So I would strongly recommend that we use the agency to do the enforcement. I also would strongly recommend that unless we have, you know, horrible heartburn with the model ordinance that has been presented, that we leave the model ordinance the way it is. I think the more cities we get, if over time, the model ordinance causes issues, I think those issues will be caused in all of the cities, and we could at that time revisit the model ordinance. And lastly, there was a comment about the, not, this not being about the environment. So, yeah, there are some laws coming down about things that we have to meet. There are some pretty significant legislation coming down for us to have to be able to recycle or compost things. And the reality is that it is a cost issue because we do not have forever capacity in our landfills. And it will be extremely expensive to get another landfill. It's not that simple. It, you know, if you think about it, I don't even know how old our landfill is. It's probably, I don't know, 50 years old. See, I mean, I don't even know how old it is. But the regulations have changed so dramatically that it's almost, I'll say this, almost impossible to get a permit for a new landfill. So the one that we have, the longer that we can make that live for us as a county, I think we are going to thank ourselves because I don't think that we will want to pay for the alternative to that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore, any questions or comments?
I do have some comments. I'd like to see what we can do to accelerate this. I'd like us to do a little outreach to the Cities Festival and find out what their implementation process looked like, how long that took, what their outreach was to the community. Because if they've been doing it since 2018, it's like we're way behind the eight ball on this. And I don't know why we would have to continue to wait until 2020. The sooner we act upon it, the less we have in that landfill. And then we can, you know, with, if the council were to decide to go forward with something like this, and you've got a one-year implementation period, that would seem for Katati to be a long enough period for education and/or depletion of existing stock, you know, that would not be in compliance. So I'd like to see if we can accelerate this.
Yeah, and I just, just to add my two thoughts on that, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that by going out and having meetings with businesses, you know, with the chamber and with zero waste, that we're slowing the process down. But I've seen too many times in the past in this city where we haven't done proper outreach. And I fully believe in outreach. And I think the businesses just need to know, should we go in this direction, here's what it's going to mean to you. That's what I'm saying. I don't think it's more than an hour and a half, two-hour type meeting in here, you know, open to the public, but I mean, geared towards the businesses, because they're the ones that are going to be dealing with this from a financial standpoint. Well, now, instead of buying these cups, which only cost me eight cents a cup, when I buy 5,000 of them, you know, these cups here are going to cost me 12 cents, whatever the magic numbers are. They need to know what that is because that becomes at some level of financial impact to them. Cups was the bad choice because I know that's going to be exempt. So that was a bad choice. Plates, whatever. So that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying we're going to wait until April. We're not going to wait till Earth Day. I don't know that it's going to take that long, but I feel that outreach is really, really important just to give them a heads up. That's what I'm saying.
And I do think outreach is there. I just don't know that we need to extend it any great length of period of time.
No, and I'm not putting a period of time. I know Leslie had mentioned that there may be these extensions for all these jurisdictions to get it done, because there were several of them that I thought you said weren't looking at this till January. So that, we're not doing that. Here we are in September, and we're looking at it, right? So, and making some decisions for staff to kind of move things forward. So I'm there with you, but I wanted to just make sure that, I'm not suggesting we slow the process down, but that we take the right steps by educating, and we'll continue to educate the businesses. That was a long-winded answer. Sorry.
Yeah, and then I've never known the free market to correct anything.
All right, then. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Change is a difficult thing. We're living in a point in history where it seems like change is upon us quicker than ever, more constantly than ever, impacting everybody, and in ways that are difficult sometimes to adjust to. And I think we all get that. Nevertheless, change is absolutely necessary. And if you don't have change, if you have complete stasis, you have nothing. So, and in this case, I think change is absolutely necessary, absolutely necessary. I would agree with my colleague. I would like to see us move to this, not imprudently, but as quick as reasonably possible, having done appropriate outreach to talk and work together. And that's the advantage. That's one of the reasons governments involved in this, to be able to bring that kind of organized approach that understands all the inputs, not just one individual businesses, but to try and pull it all together. Once we can do that, I'd like to see us move forward with this. I'd like to see the model ordinance come back. I'd like to see an idea of costs, how we might do this in-house versus we might farm this out, what combination works backs, how enforcement could work, because I thought that was a good question. We should be able to, at that time, speak to that. I think that would be very important. I was very, very pleased particularly to see the results of the survey that were put out. That really makes the point that I believe 90% of our businesses are going to be willing to do this. There'll be some grumbling because it's a pain and a change, but they've already tried to do these things by buying the right products. But with a lack of information, the changing system of being able to compost in the county, all these different things, there hasn't been an organized approach, and that's what's necessary. My friend mentioned how the private sector may not be the right tool for this, and I agree with you 100%. I think we found that the private sector for this sort of thing, number one, there's a lack of that organized approach in all sectors. Number two, short-term self-interest, sadly, sometimes wins out over prudent, long-term thinking. And hopefully, that's one thing we might be, I believe, in a better position to be able to bring forward. So I'm just going to close by saying I also strongly support, I think it's one of the first things I wrote really big on the paper here, consistent ordinance. Support that. It makes 100% sense to denigrate that unless we find something that we find weak. And that's not what I'm seeing here. I'm seeing something that's up to date, modern, and covers all best practices. And if we have that, I would hope we would not go the direction of Petaluma. I think that really undercuts the effort and makes it more difficult for businesses and everybody in this county. So I'm hoping we can set a better example by taking the ordinance and following it, and hopefully getting some of our neighbor cities to join us in doing exactly that same way. It'll make it easier for everybody and make it more consistent for all the consumers and customers in this county, too. So, I want to thank the Waste Management Agency, too. Nicely done. Very nicely done to put this together and be able to run this in-house. I'm impressed. It's a good thing.
You have the direction you need?
So, yeah, I believe so. So I will, I'll be working with the waste agency, getting outreach going as soon as possible to make sure that the businesses are aware of this model ordinance coming down in the near future, and then we'll get it scheduled for introduction.
And I don't believe, I'll come back to you. I don't believe I heard anyone bring up any editorials for the model ordinance here this evening either. So that tells me, at least at first blush, we have no changes whatsoever. So just keep that in mind. And...
By editorials, you meant changes?
Yes, that's exactly what I meant.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, specific to the ordinance itself. You know, again, I read through it, and it made sense. I was just thinking from the perspective, you know, is there anything we would want to add in addition to, not that we need to. Again, I totally remember the plastic bag ban, and that was the biggest message, definitely. Now, you had something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a suggestion. Since the Chamber of Commerce already has in place their, I think it's quarterly luncheons, monthly, this may be a perfect subject for them to put forth to their, to their members, because they can do the presentation and ask questions. And anyways, just a thought.
And they also have their newsletter to start getting the...
They do to get the information out, but I thought, you know, if they did a presentation there, it would allow businesses to come in.
Yes, please.
This might be something I might ask actually staff from the Waste Management Agency to answer. In terms of, you are preparing for, have expertise and background in outreach and education for this, as I understand. In terms of outreach, I would imagine you have a system for trying to reach out and get affected businesses that make sure that you just go beyond. We have a large degree of participation in our chamber, but I know that doesn't always catch everybody. And I wouldn't want to limit it just to that. I want to make sure that we have something, as I was saying, I'd like to make sure we have something that can reach out and get to everybody. I wonder if there's anything you can share with us on that, because it seems that there's an interest. We want to make sure the outreach gets everybody and in a timely fashion, so we can bring this back as, in a timely as fashion as possible.
Yeah, we actually already started creating that list, working with the haulers. So the haulers know the businesses that would, you know, they have the SA, the regular codes, so we can code businesses to make sure we...
You know who's getting the materials. You know who we need to talk to. Perfect. I think that settles it. So what do you think is a reasonable timeframe for outreach? We might see? So what do you think is a reasonable timeframe for outreach, what we might see?
I just wanted to address how the municipal did is they did a study session. They had over 80 people come to their council chamber, and there's only standing room only in the back, just to hear the zero-waste ordinance and the polystyrene ordinance. So that's why it happened so fast, because 80 people filling a council room.
I would suggest then, perhaps, if you're going to do outreach, to notify these people and begin the education and information process, that we have a date set to invite them. Here's, here's what's happening, here's what's involved, we're going to be talking about it here. Please come. That might be something that staff and you can put together and shorten the timeframe, and then help us with our goal, which is to make sure we get as strong as outreach as possible.
That's brilliant, having the trash hauler give you that feedback. Because who else would know? But I mean, obviously, community development here in the city would have all the businesses' contact information. So, you know, I think there's a meeting of those two potentially that will get this all together, so.
Making lists, checking it twice.
That's right.
Almost that time of year. Thank you. Great, thank you for replying to that, Leslie. Appreciate it. Okay, any further direction for staff? We're good?
Are they directed?
I think they're directed.
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Thank you for that public feedback. Thanks for the discussion. And we'll go on to item 11B, is direction to the voting delegate for the 2019 Annual League of California Cities Business Meeting, October 16 to 18.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep it brief. So as you all know, coming up is the annual league meeting. And we have two, we have a voting delegate and an alternate, which is the mayor, and the alternate is Councilmember Harvey. So in the, in this, in this league meeting, there are, in the packet, two resolutions proposed for consideration. One is a modification to what's called the Rule 20A credit program. So just real briefly, Rule 20A is a crediting system that PG&E, actually all the IOUs in California have required to do per CPUC rules. Basically, they take a certain percentage of the revenue collected within that jurisdiction, and they set it aside in a credit program. And the jurisdiction can form underground utility districts that meet the certain criteria, typically high travel, high visibility or high-travelway areas. And then they can, with the creation of an underground utility district, they can ask their utility, in our case PG&E, to underground the overhead utilities. And the, PG&E would then use that accrued credit, including potentially some borrowing forward, I think it's up to five years, to basically engineer and construct, so the utility would engineer and construct the undergrounding. So that's Rule 20A in a nutshell, Rule 20A from the CPUC. The proposed resolution would add the, the criteria to be able to use Rule 20A credit money to high-fire-risk areas. That wouldn't so much apply to cities, for the most, at least not around here for the most part. It'd be more in this area, the unincorporated areas of the county. But I'm sure there are some cities in Southern California where maybe that could apply within the jurisdictional boundaries. So that's, that's one of the resolutions. The other one has to do with transnational flow of water, I think in particular the Tijuana River, where it flows back into the United States with a lot of other things in it besides water. And so petitioning the state and federal government for help in cleaning that up. So not an issue for us, but an issue for those border communities in Southern California. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the city manager? Looking this direction first? No, no. Don't want to talk about affluent water, huh? All right, fine.
Because he laughs at me as I pick up my glass to drink.
I know. I know, I even put mine down. I'm going to open this to the general public. Anybody like to comment on any of these things? Seen no one. I'll close the public comment period. And direction?
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Please.
I would be actually supportive of supporting both of these. Obviously, fire concerns are a lot arguably more important than purely aesthetic ones, and that's what in the past is what they've been using this Rule 20A credit program for. So if this money is there and it's available for that, I think that's a good thing to support. My personal preference, I'd sure like to see that come, not from ratepayers and stockholders, but that's a separate issue. This fund already exists, so I think it would be good for us to support that. And that's kind of, that impacts everybody potentially in the state in certain areas. So that's an easy one. And after some thought, I, I recognize this is more a regional concern, but you know, I, I think it is time to refund the BWIP. I mean, just the numbers I found telling in 1996, for the interest of keeping these waterways clean and the interest of everybody, 100 million was their funding. If we're down to 10 million today, and for next year's budget, it's zero, that's not workable. And in terms of trying to place the responsibility where it should be, I do notice that they're trying to have a suit against the IBWC, the transnational group that's supposed to make sure that these standards are upheld. So they're doing their best to help make people be responsible. So it seems to me like a reasonable thing to support. If, I know if our region was in that situation, I'd sure want Southern California to vote for us.
And they probably would since we send them a fair amount of water through our water systems. Any, any other comments? Yes, please.
Just to, just to add to that, on the, on the first one, you know, things do change over time. This Rule 20A was created way back in 1967. So, you know, what, what the world was like in 1967 versus what it is now is very, very different. So I agree that, that I think that...
I hope you're not trying to send me home depressed tonight now, Susan.
No, 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 no. And second, now I lost my train of thought on the second one. That agency is in charge also of making sure that the infrastructure is working. And with no money, it's very hard to maintain infrastructure. And when you go from $150 million down to zero, well, if you have zero dollars to maintain infrastructure, that's a problem.
Absolutely. Makes perfect sense. Councilmember Moore, anything in addition?
I would concur with my fellow councilmembers and support both of them.
All right, so the direction I'm hearing is to vote yes for both resolutions?
Yes.
Great. With that, didn't I already open this up for public comment?
Yeah, you did.
Yeah. Didn't you already say you had none? So now you're going to tell me again you still don't have any? Okay, we're good. All right, thank you very much. And let's move on to item 12, the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first of all, I will let you know some, some exciting, some exciting news. We also, in addition, you know, I think you, well, you know that we've won a couple awards for our budget. We also got our comprehensive financial report award. And, and we just added to that the popular annual financial reporting award. So that's the condensed version of the CAFER, sort of the Cliff Notes version of the CAFER. We won an award for that, so great job, Admin Services.
Excellent work.
Yeah. So we're running out of wall space for these awards, but we'll, I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Actually, I saw, I saw the plaque where you're just, there's just little years you can add to it now. So you have plenty of time.
But we have a new plaque we need to put up.
Oh, even better.
Recycle and reuse.
There you go.
Yeah. So anyway, so that, so great job there. And also, just a reminder that we do offer online bill pay for our utility customers, and they can access that from our website. So if, if that is helpful to anybody, they can sign up for reoccurring payments or one-time payments. And we're looking to continue to expand that into other services, like dog licenses and things like that. So, so look for more in the future on that. And then community development, I had mentioned, actually, the council had seen the resolution for the SB 2 planning grant that was submitted to the state. And I'm just reporting back that we received approval, that's what's called conditional approval of the SB 2 grant from the state, $165,000 to enable us to do housing-related planning. And as you know, there's an upcoming planning workshop that's happening, and that's the real first effort that we're doing with the planning grant money, to, to really look for ways that we could find housing solutions that fit Cattani, as opposed to housing solutions that fit downtown Oakland, that the state keeps on trying to adopt on everyone. So anyway, that's, so that's, we're kicking it off here, October, I think it's 24th. And, and that's actually an ongoing source of funding, which is kind of interesting, too. There's a recording fee that was, for property transactions, a recording fee that was added that will, beyond these initial planning grants, will then go on to support affordable housing in the subsequent years, so in the future. So another source of funding statewide to allow us to try to get more housing in the ground. Also, the aforementioned housing workshop on October 24th will be from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and the intent is to get citizen input on several housing initiatives the city is looking to undertake in the coming months. And we'll do a brief presentation on the changes in housing regulations. There's, a lot of this is regulatory-driven, as you can imagine, from the plethora of state regulations that have come in, that have come down. I think you heard earlier tonight from Dev, the county clerk, recorder, assessor, registrar, right? I think I got them all.
You got them all four.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, everyone's being subject to a lot of new state regulations. And housing's certainly no exception with the housing crunch in the state. So a lot of it's driven by housing regulations and adjusting to that so that we, you know, that we get, at the end of the day, we get the product that we want to see in Cattani in that new regulatory framework. But also, you know, where there's discretion, you know, coming up with solutions again that are, that are, that make sense in Cattani, as opposed to anywhere else in the world. And after the workshop, there will be an online survey that is available, and it will then go to Planning Commission and council for formal review and hopefully approval at that time. As you all know, PG&E is toying with what they're calling a public safety power shut-off. That is, when there's red flag warnings, high-fire-risk warnings, that's typically in the high mountain passes where the wind whips up and the, the power lines can, you know, knock together or just get knocked off by, by flying debris. They have, they have gotten CPUC authority to shut off power to areas. And so they did shut off power to the Sierras, and they're continuing to watch the, the weather conditions here in Sonoma County. To date, they haven't actually shut any power off in Sonoma County. And Cattani is not in the potentially affected areas if they do shut off power, but in any case, we're continuing to monitor it. And we put out stuff on our website for people to check themselves if they're interested, and we continue to put out, we have put out social media posts, and we'll continue to put out posts to the community if things do change and we find that there is a public safety power shut-off, and particularly if there's one that affects Cattani. On some road projects, paving was completed today in the L section. So if you go through the L section today, it's all paved, so it looks very nice. And East Cattani, west of the railroad tracks, so this is East Cattani railroad tracks to Old Redwood Highway, there, you're probably, you've probably seen that they've prepared it for slurry seal. So that's going to happen, scheduled to happen next week. And the idea there, like, if you remember when it was paved, you know, over 10 years ago, they'll keep one lane open in each direction as they slurry, and then they'll close the next lane and slurry that one. And then a week or so after that, I think this is actually the second week of October, they're planning to stripe the asphalt in these newly slurry sealed and paved areas. So there's a lot of activity there with that. And then a separate project on East Cattani Avenue, this is east of the railroad tracks, so this is in front of Sunflower Park and Lumo Farms. If you've been out there, you'll, you'll see they've done quite a bit of curb work, both on the side, on the Sunflower Park side, but also the center median was ripped out, and the curb was repoured there. So that's scheduled for paving the week of October 7th. And there'll be a lot of, it was scheduled to not be at the same time the slurry seal was happening on the other part of East Cattani, just to try to minimize some of the lane closure disruptions as people are traveling down East Cattani. But a lot of, a lot of paving and asphalt restoration work happening on East Cattani. So very exciting stuff, if you're into that kind of thing, which I know we all are. So also, one other thing I will add is that the striping at Old Redwood Highway in East Cattani will be restriped in a different manner than it is today. So it will be two turn lanes onto East Cattani from Old Redwood Highway. So look for that. There will be signage up to indicate those changed conditions there. And then just on recreation, this past week, we partnered with Alix, the Water Agency, Recology, and a variety of community, people from the community, to host a creek cleanup. And it coincided with the statewide coastal cleanup day and the Water Agency's Creek Cleanup Week. So we had about 20 volunteers in, on the creek path, clearing out trash and other debris all morning, and we look forward to doing this again in the future. So it was a successful cleanup. We got a lot of, a lot of trash out of there. I haven't heard the final tally yet, but...
I've got it.
Do you?
Yeah.
You got the tally?
I'm the mayor, for the love of God. Why would I not have these numbers? Of course I have the tally, yes. And we'll report out on that.
I would, I would love to hear about it after you're done, because I've been asking the people that were there, and they couldn't give me the tally. So I'm glad that you know.
Not a problem.
We'll hear about it here. So also in early October, we're hosting a junior farmster mini camp for children to learn about life on a working farm. This is a three-day weekend camp for children ages 5 to 12. And there, it's, they'll work with animal care and gardening, as well as the history of the ranch. So look online for that. The registration information is there. Also, Monday, October 14th, we're holding our Camp Cattani PJ party for children ages 5 to 12. This is a holiday for the local school district, so therefore it's a, a camp day for anyone that wants to take part of that. And we have games, crafts, and, and more. And so it'll be open from 7:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Space is limited, so if you want to get in your pajamas and go there, sign up early. It is limited to 12, I'm sorry. So that means none of us can go. But if you have any children that want to go, it's available. And all this information can be found on the website or by Cattani, or contacting the Recreation Department, or Ashley Wilson, at awilson@catatycity.org. And with that, I will stop talking and be happy to answer any questions.
I will add to your paving comment that Old Red, Loretto, Lincoln, I was, happened to be on all of those with my, either my bike or my car today. And I mean, they look great. And Benson, which was done a couple of weeks ago. I mean, I guess that's Argonaut that's doing all that work? Yeah. They've done a great job so far. I don't know if they're completely done on Loretto. I didn't, I only went in one direction, I went towards Lincoln off of Benson, I didn't go the other way. And I almost thought the pavement might have ended. So I'm not sure they've completely finished that stretch, but maybe they did, and I just didn't see it. But it looks great, all the work they've done. And yeah, when that whistle, when I stop hearing that whistle, really an O'Dark 100, it'll be great. It'll be great. I'll know the work is done. Any questions for city manager and any reports? Councilmember Moore?
No, and I believe that whistle is prior to 6:30 in the morning.
It definitely is, yeah. There's no question in my mind.
Warming up those trucks.
And since your microphone is on, why don't we go to city council member reports? And we'll start with you.
I don't have any reports. We do have a REMF meeting coming up Thursday morning in Ukiah.
This Thursday?
Correct.
Yep, okay. Great, thanks. Councilmember Harvey?
I attended the Zero Waste Agency meeting, and we had a presentation by the Local Area Task Force. And it was really interesting about the challenges of permitting different kinds of facilities. And so they did a pretty good job of laying out what some of those challenges are. Some are things that maybe we can help with, but a lot of them are things that we won't be able to do much about and will definitely need some help with. We also had a presentation about the stuff that's compostable or not, which is, they're struggling with some of that in working with Renewable Sonoma on that. So we received a presentation, there was a very lively discussion on that, and I think staff and Renewable Sonoma will be coming back to us with more on that at a later date. Secondly, I went yesterday to League of California Cities North Bay Division meeting. It was held at Sonoma Raceway, and we got a tour of the raceway. That is just a pretty incredible place. And as luck would have it, there was a motorcycle school going on. So when they toured us, they were able to, you know, show us the different turns and what was going on with them. We also received a... also received a presentation from Suzanne Smith of SCTA, our CPA, and Daryl Hall's with the, a similar agency in one of the other locations. And it was about Highway 37 and the possibilities for what they're going to do with Highway 37. And there are four different alternatives that they are looking at, and they are looking at different things in pieces. I think Mark probably knows a lot more about this. It was very interesting because one of the alternatives that's out there is to kind of move the whole thing up to where like 121 is and have people come back down by American Canyon. And needless to say, the mayor of American Canyon got up and spoke for about 10 minutes on why that was a bad idea. So anyways, they do have some plans, both short-term and long-term. And the bottom line is, we, doing nothing is not an option. Every year, that gets worse and worse. And, you know, we can't really afford to have that highway closed. Not too many people commute on it. So that was very interesting. And last but not least on that, I was voted to be the second vice president for the North Bay Division.
All right. Congratulations.
That was ratified by the group. So I am also pulling my nomination for the mayors and council members since this automatically gives me a seat on that board. So-
Tell Mr. Healy you decided to keep both, just for the fun of it?
I could, I could have done that, but, but I didn't. But, so it'll be an honor to serve on that. So I will be installed, I guess, in, at the meeting in Long Beach. And that's all I have. Yeah.
Installed like a good engine.
I guess, yeah.
I guess. Yeah, I'm not quite sure. Not a great analogy. Let's quickly move to Councilmember Landman.
And everything will slow down as soon as you get here. But first of all, Highway 37, I can tell you, no solution is easy or good, and they're all incredibly expensive. And that's just the tip of the iceberg of the types of things we'll be seeing in decades to come. So, so that, yeah, so that's going to be interesting. And it's a big thing. It's something regionally, I don't know even how we'll be able to pull it off. It'll be interesting.
It's wonderful that the four different counties were working-
We actually-
That counties were all working so well together. It was really incredible the first time that they had seen, you know, that much cooperation.
And as we look at the range of options for funding this, some of the ones that gave me the most concern seem to be off the table at least, because this is something even four counties aren't even really going to be able to fund, I don't think. So, but at any rate, yeah, it's as good as cooperation, working together, as you could hope. I'm sure that's been hammered out to great detail and expense, but so far, so good. So we'll see what comes of that. I just wanted to report, some of the cities in the county are starting to look at an all-electric reach code. I believe Sebastopol, as usual, did this probably 20 years ago, knowing them, but they've already done this. Cloverdale's, I think, talking about it tonight. And I know Santa Rosa talked about it, at least bringing it back to actually look at. And I think that passed tonight. So, and since there's some interest in this, and also some concern from some members of the community, we're going to be discussing this at our October 14th Regional Climate Protection meeting. So we'll be discussing it, potentially looking at if it meets all the targets that that group would support, just putting out a letter of recommendation to the cities, because obviously, it's an individual city decision, but we certainly, if it's something that's in our ballpark, can certainly say, hey, this looks like a good idea to this group. So that'll likely, hopefully, be the result of that. So I wanted to share that with you.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick items to report out. One that I wouldn't normally report out on, but I was asked as the mayor of Kattati to come and give a keynote address at the naturalization ceremony for new immigrants at Point Reyes National Seashore. So I had organized it for the last nine years, and this was the 10th year, no longer an employee there, of course. And so the Immigration Naturalization Service said, you know, would you be interested in coming to speak on it? It's like, yeah, I don't think I'm qualified to do this. But, but I thought about it and agreed. And it was a great event. There was 26 candidates from 16 different nations. So it's always a really cool event to attend. And I think much better in a setting of a national park than a large parking lot or an airplane hangar somewhere in Oakland or San Francisco. So, yeah, it's, it was, it was a fun event. And then I did take place, because I have the numbers, in the creek cleanup. And so it was a total of, and it was measured in gallons because of the bins that were left behind from Recology. It was 250, approximately 250 gallons. Almost 200 of that was just trash. 48 was recycled, and somewhere around five was actually compost. It, well, we assume it'll be composted in Sonoma County. That's a whole nother question now. I'm not quite sure. But it's being composted somewhere. But I will say that outside of the group of five or six that were down at Commerce at the far end of the Laguna, when they brought back, you know, a reclining chair, a table, I mean, big items that were just dumped, we had much smaller items. But in L Park, where the city of Rona Park came through and cut a bunch of trees down the Laguna, it exposed all of this trash that's been there for who knows how long. It looked really, really old. And even those really nice carpeted sections that are rubber backed, that, you know, you see like coming in and out of offices and stuff, there was two completely full. I mean, I don't want to call them brand new because they were really gross. They were buried, but somebody would see a little piece of rubber, and they'd start to pull, and then eight feet later, you know, this whole thing came out. So, so we pulled a lot of trash out of there. The creek was moderately clean, I will say. You know, that creek doesn't get a lot of debris, but probably a lot of it flows with, you know, the winter storms that come in and out. So 250 gallons, that's your magic number that you were looking for. It wasn't worth the weight, I'm sure. And we'll move to item 14, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Mr. Beric?
Thank you for those reports. 250 gallons is not a lot, Mayor, if you really look at it. Not a lot at all, which says a lot about how clean our creeks really are. We'd heard a little bit tonight about 121 cities pass a similar ordinance that we talked about tonight regarding polystyrene, styrofoam and so forth. If we found that 121 cities became sanctuary cities, would that persuade you to go down that road? It's an interesting thing to follow the leader, you know? 121 cities have done this, 99 cities have done that. That helps justify what we do. I expect you people just to use your own brains, look at the facts, use your critical thinking skills, and find out whether the law works for our community or doesn't, and not play follow the leader. Ms. Harvey talks about, you know, we got a problem with our landfills being, being pretty full. Well, what's going to happen is you're going to see a lot more people starting to burn trash. This is where this is going. That's where the situation has become so bad, you're going to see more people burning, illegal burning. And I suggested maybe a demonstration across the street at the fake farm, that we actually show how farmers used to do it. Not actually burn, but show a burned pile. And this is what farmers used to do with trash. That didn't go very far. This whole idea about zero waste, it's a fraud. Doesn't exist. There's no such thing as zero waste. Mrs. Harvey talks about enforcement. She's glad that the county is going to be helping with enforcement. Well, let me remind you, the cost of enforcement will be passed on to the consumer. There's nothing free about enforcement. I reuse some pre-plastic items like straws and plastic utensils and so forth. I reuse a lot of things like that. Matter of fact, that uses up a lot of water. We didn't talk about water tonight with these reusable containers. That was the first line of choice as an alternative. How much water that that's going to use to wash all those containers? I disagree with Mr. Landman. The private sector is the right tool. Always has been, throughout history, always will be. Whenever government is the right tool, it fails. You can study it for yourself. And as far as the Chamber of Commerce goes, I don't want to see this presentation tonight redone for them. That's why we have it on video. Just tell them to watch this video cast tonight. Okay? Record it, buy them lunch, let them see it, and forget about all this. And regarding our weed abatement this year, we're in September, the city gets an F.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Ms. Alderman?
Okay, for future agenda items. One thing I was thinking about is, with the community voice, we're getting swamped because Rona Park has so many issues right now. I was wondering if we could look into, like, next year, so we're not on the same night. So it'd be Rona Park one week, Kattati the next. So if we could look into rescheduling those days. The other thing I was interested in was putting, making the, it's a totally hot day today, but we're going to have the fall come and open up for emergency nights for shelter for the homeless and anyone. Also, there doesn't seem to be, like today, the, with the red flag warning and everything, Santa Rosa is opening up cooling centers and all this kind of stuff. We were, we got the Nixal, ain't happening in Kattati, ain't likely to happen, here's, here, do it yourself. You know, we need something a little more concrete. We need to know that, open up the police community room, you know, or something, even if it's, you know, do like Santa Rosa, basically, which is not a high standard. Anyway, the other thing I noticed tonight is your police station, the Kattati room, the back door, the handicap is not, does not have power assist doors. It's, I think it's not ADA-
The back door of the, here?
Yeah. It's not power assist. I think it has to be power assist for public, I'd have to check that, but I would, I would like that to be addressed in the future. I'd, whether this, if City Hall and everything is compliant to the current ADA. And what, there might be an exemption for like City Hall because it's historic, whatever, but I don't know. But that was another issue. So I think that's about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else on this issue? Nope. Seen no one? Go ahead and close that down. And we are at item 15, any information received after the agenda was posted. None. And that means we will adjourn at 9:02. Thank you all very much.